All right, ladies and gentlemen, at six o'clock, we'll get started and call the order, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, which Eric's gonna lead for us, and Phillip's gonna do a prayer. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phillip, I think he's counting on you.
Phillip, please, sir.
My Father, thank you for this day, thank you for all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Be with us tonight as we go through this meeting, look down on the city, protect us, may the commissioners make great decisions. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Here.
Jacqueline Granberry?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
And Willie Albersen?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move Agenda Item 11H to the first item.
We have a motion, but might just suspend the...
Basically, moving the auditor up to the beginning of new business?
Please, yes.
And then he's... And Ms. Granberry seconded it.
You can have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Juris.
Well, no, he's new business. We do, we still do the swearing-in. He's moved him up to the beginning of 11.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I thought you were doing it now.
We're putting it at the beginning of new business. We're about there.
We'll get there in just a second.
Absolutely.
I really thought this was where you were moving it to. All right, number four, approval correction of minutes for prior meetings. We do have two sets, please, from a study session of the 12th, and then our regular meeting of the 17th. Once everybody's had an opportunity to review and entertain a motion.
Motion was passed, the minute, from the same section.
We have a motion. Uh, both sets?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have a motion to approve both sets. Second. We have a couple of seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Completion, review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
We have to do five, Mayor.
I tell how I rea... Big hurry, I'm in tonight.
You have a date.
Yeah, with this right here. Tonight. All right, first thing we have is swearing-in a police officer, Chris McDougal.
Chief Hay is out, but Assistant Chief will be here. You taking pictures, Jack, or...
No, this is Patty.
Okay.
Patty, Patty. She raised her right hand. Aye, Christopher McDougal.
Aye, Christopher McDougal.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Named in the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Named in the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
For the office of a member of the Police Department.
For the office as a member of the Police Department.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
That I will comply with.
That I will comply with.
And observe.
And observe.
The provisions of the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
The provisions of the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very easy swearing-in.
We're proud to have you. Thank you very much.
It comes with the qualifications.
He's already certified.
Yeah, already certified, so that's a biggie for us.
Yeah, this is, if I said it, the study session is part-time right now.
Yes, part-time right now. All right, we got the proclamation for the youth football.
And for the coaches, Mayor, I'll leave this here, but we've got enough copies for all the kids to have copies of.
All the kids.
Because we knew they couldn't all come in here.
Somebody want to go ahead and grab them?
Thank you.
Now, thank y'all. All right, everybody ready? Whereas the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents, and whereas the citizens recognize the Mount Pleasant Youth Football League's 11- to 12-year-old division players, cheerleaders, and coaches as an integral part of this community, and whereas this team has exemplified the high standards of good sportsmanship and personal conduct in being Tri-County Junior Pro Football Champions for 2019 and 2020 for two years in a row. They had a record of 21-0 undefeated for two years. That's all. The Mount Pleasant Youth Football Cheerleaders place second in competition. Their head coach, Chris Claude, and assistant coaches Kendall Lane, Doyle McKee, James Cotton, Jeremy Whitaker, Ethan Davis, cheerleader director Kayla Schmidt, cheer coach Jamie Young, President Tony Marlowe, Vice President Matthew Case, and League Commissioner Jake Sykes were all very instrumental in helping them obtain these outstanding wins and the championships. Whereas the Mount Pleasant Youth Football League has represented the City of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the State of Tennessee with the highest of standards in participation, and now therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the date of December the 15th, 2020, as Mount Pleasant Youth Football League Day. In honor of them, and do call upon all the citizens and residents of the City of Mount Pleasant, to join with us in duly recognizing the outstanding performance of this team. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dave.
Anything anybody'd like to say right quick?
The other ones will see you next year, right?
We'll be back.
Good. Don't worry about it.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
We've taken a bunch, but we'll give you some, uh, next year hopefully for the kids here.
They wanted everybody.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we'll, we can do it out there. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. Now, I think I'm finally getting it on board. Completion, review of unfinished business from prior meeting.
There's not any here.
None. Monthly report from Mayor, I hope everybody, and I said this during the work session, I hope everybody gets out and rides around town, I did last night, for a few minutes view. And I noticed that, uh, I can't remember the family name, but it was out on Hoover Mason.
Yeah, um, I can't, it's the very first house.
It got the, got the local award for the best decorated, but there have been some folks in this community that have really shown an ownership and pride in this community, and it's, it's awesome to see. So I, I just want to thank everybody that's done that, and let them know how much we appreciate them doing. That's all I've got. Monthly financial and budget report, please, ma'am.
I think you received the, uh, budget report email. Uh, and of course, today, we have our audit will be presented, and that will actually be June, what, you know, we, in June, we do not, we always defer our, uh, financial report to, to December because of the, the audit. That way we get final numbers on that. Um, for November, uh, we're all within budget, and so I think we're in, in good shape for November. November is one of the, uh, kind of a, uh, in-between months, first property taxes. Property taxes generally, oh, we'll, we'll collect some on the front end in October, and when people get, first get their notices, um, don't collect as much in November, and then in December, at the end of the year, we'll, uh, we'll have quite a bit of collections, and then they'll bid another first, and again, uh, before the due date, and that being into February. Um, of course, the water and sewer, and sanitation, those are all pretty much year, so they're not, they're not as seasonal as the property taxes are. Does anybody have any questions of the financial report?
I looked it over real well, it looks fine to me, just for everybody's information. Continue to do a great job.
Mayor, if there's none, I'll make a motion to approve the financial budget report.
We have a motion, do we have a second? You got a second? You got a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That'll also include the electors.
Yes. We didn't have one last year from them, but we have it now, everything now.
All right. Monthly report from city manager.
Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody, and I put something in front of each of you, that we have kind of a holiday breakfast on Friday, um, at 7:00 a.m., and Silverman Public Works, and you're more than welcome to attend and visit with employees, and, uh, everything's a little different this year with COVID. We're gonna do the best we can to, to enjoy it, but we'll make sure you guys are welcome. Um, and we are, kind of like every other organization around here, we're experiencing some COVID. We've had, we've had to send some employees home. It's nothing that I have a tremendous concern about, like over the top, that we're problematic, but we're just following the CDC guidelines and continue to do so, and just kind of keeping you guys up to date on that. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Everybody needs to be safe. I saw early afternoon where Tennessee's the highest rate in the nation right now.
I didn't know that.
Yep. Just got, got announced this afternoon, so please, everybody, be as careful as you can. All right. Number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees, if applicable, wastewater liaison report, which this is where we're gonna have the bar due date.
Yes, so just want to repeat kind of what I said at the study session, for the main purposes of being, of being in the minute. So we have closed out the wastewater treatment plant improvements, that's the first thing on the bar report. That is project done, it's been paid for, and we're applying for another grant come February. Uh, the trunk line, you've seen that they finished the inspection. You should see repairs starting the week of January 4th, and installation of the Kuridim pipe by the, the following week of January 11th. So that's, that's, to me, it's all awesome. Um, then the Rainy Street Sewer improvements and the wastewater treatment plant improvements, which is the largest of all of this, are at 90% design by the engineers, which means that we as a department and city will sit down with the engineers and go over all the design work, because we want all the input from our staff on, our staff has to operate these systems that they design, so I always want the staff to be very involved in that process, and we'll be having a 90% meeting, possibly before January meeting, I'm not positive, but it'll be in the next month or two. So that's what's going on with our wastewater, moving right along.
Any, any other, I guess, on the Eastwood property?
No, have no input unless, Cory, you have something I don't know about.
I don't have anything, yeah.
Still working on it, but thank you.
Yeah, I think it's critical that we keep the people that are gonna be in charge of this thing and, and process this, because they're the ones that's gotta do it.
Well, the engineers will say quite often, this is how it works, and the people that are at, at the plant will say, not done.
Right.
So I want them to be in agreement for sure.
Yeah. So, good work there.
And it does not need a motion or anything.
No. Anything on the gas?
No, we're good there.
Okay. Now, 11, new business, this is where we're gonna roll the audit up.
This is very...
Thank you.
Everybody have a copy?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I thought Cory was on the phone.
Yes. They keep her up. Yeah, we put her up too.
I mean, you know, you guys, I could read through every page of this report.
No, 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 no.
You could read, no.
You might get things thrown at you.
I hope you like talking to full walls.
That's right. That's why I supposed to give you up low secrets.
Yeah, well, it's always a pleasure to be with you guys. Um, I'll just give you the highlights, per usual, um, of the audit report, and, um, you know, if you guys have any questions, you guys can ask at the end, or, um, if you're looking over this later, obviously, this is a long report, won't be able to cover everything tonight. Um, our contact information's listed on our letterhead throughout the report, so you guys are more than welcome to read that to us. Um, so the first thing I'll start on is page seven. This is the independent auditors' report. Uh, this is a standard letter from our firm to the mayor and city commissioners of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. It just states that management is responsible for the financial statements, and that our firm is responsible for auditing the financial statements and providing an opinion based on our audits. Uh, and it's a clean audit opinion, uh, for the year ended June 30, 2020. And that is essentially what the next two pages say. Um, then we'll jump into, uh, management's discussion and analysis on page 10. Um, so just to read over these financial highlights here, um, if you don't read anything on this report other than this section, this will kind of give you the, the cliff notes. Um, so, you know, as it says, the, the assets of the city exceeded liabilities by 41 million. Uh, of this amount unrestricted, it's about 10.2 million. Uh, going down to the next paragraph, the city's total net position increased by 2 million. Uh, an increase in net position is kind of your bottom line, what revenues exceeded expenses. Um, and that was for the year ended June 30, 2020, so a strong positive line of 2, 2 million there for, for the fiscal year. Um, going down to the third paragraph, uh, the general funds unassigned fund balance is 2.51 million, or 61% of total general fund expenditures, so also a strong financial measure there. Um, and then the fourth item, uh, as of June 30, 2020, the city's governmental funds reported ending fund balances of 2 points, about 2.8 million, uh, which was an increase of 350,000 from the previous year, and that the city's long-term debt increased by about 246,000 during the fiscal year, uh, which was only about 1.5%. Um, if you flip over a couple pages to, uh, page 13, this is a, kind of a condensed government-wide, uh, balance sheet here, kind of detailing out the assets, liabilities, and net position. So you can see that on a comparative basis, government on the first two columns versus business type here. Um, if you want to see kind of some of those changes there, you can see that, um, included, showing the, you know, increase in net position and whatnot that we just discussed. Um, and then on page 14, showing the condensed statement of activities on a comparison basis, 2020 versus 2019 here as well, along with the variance, uh, detailing out all the revenues year by year, and all the expenditures, and I'll just touch on, um, you know, total revenues being about 24.8 million in 2020 versus 25.5 in 2019. So, you know, a small decrease there, but if you go down to total expenditures, um, that decreased by more than the revenues decreased. So your total bottom line, as mentioned on the highlights, is that 2.07 million versus 1.7, uh, in 2019. So two, two strong years for the City of Mount Pleasant. Um, the next items I'll touch on are kind of towards the very back of the report. Page 96, uh, this is just another independent auditors' report, and this one's on internal control of the financial reporting, on compliance and other matters, uh, and this is also a clean audit opinion on compliance, uh, and internal control of the reporting. And then last one off these in the back, uh, pages 98, 99, mention that there's no current year audit findings, and that there were no, uh, prior year audit findings. So, uh, you know, there's also a separate letter, um, communication discharge of governance. Uh, this would detail any difficulties encountered in performing the audit, none of which we had. Um, it also just, uh, shows some, some small, uh, changes that we had to make as part of the audit, but none of which were big enough to, to warrant audit findings. So, um, overall, strong financial year for the city, um, coupled with no audit findings, so nothing but good news to present to the commissioners. Um, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
They may have some questions after they have that time to digest it.
Yeah.
And, and like, as he said, you're welcome to reach out to him individually.
Absolutely.
What, what I would like for each commissioner to do, if you don't mind, over the next, whatever you get a chance, between now and the next meeting being January, if you've got questions, direct them through Kate, and then the three of us can sit down and see if we can answer it. If not, we may zoom in at the next meeting.
Certainly.
Or do some, that way you don't have to drive down here, just that way, if we had any, because I would, if anybody's got anything, I want to make sure we get it in there.
The next meeting is the 19th, and the study session's the 14th, so that should give plenty of time.
Plenty of time, if, if you've got any.
I'm thankful for the, uh, $241,000 in grants that we were awarded. That's a huge, from $4,000 to 245,000, that's...
And some of that is just as we spend it, it should be a lot higher this fiscal year that we're in now, because we're spending those grants.
Yeah, that's awesome.
All good, yeah.
2,003,000. One of the things that I was pointing out early, because I geek on this stuff, the, the fact that our net cash position increased by over $2 million is just phenomenal. Just phenomenal. So thank y'all ladies for everything you do every day.
Any other questions for auditors?
Being none, I think we ought to do a roll call on this, please. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the audit.
A motion, do we have a second?
I'll make a motion.
You got a second? Roll call, please, ma'am. I feel like this is important enough to do that.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jacqueline Granberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Eric Harvey?
Yeah.
Willie Anderson?
Albersen, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We'll get it right.
I'll get it right, yeah.
It, it, motion carries, 5:00.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, appreciate it. Have a good day. Night.
All right, 11H, ordinance 2020-1060 is the first reading, an ordinance to amend of ordinance 2020-1055, said ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, providing an effective date.
Mayor and commissioners, you should all have in front of you from Loretta, kind of a bullet point listing of changes in the budget. Uh, the bigger numbers are obviously the bond and paying off the old debt. We've got to have money going in and out in the, in the budget to reflect that. Uh, then the next biggest item is the adjustments we're making to the retirement, uh, plan that's gonna come up later when we, uh, have a resolution changing the, the existing, um, resolution on our retirement. Um, other than that, uh, when you see, like, for instance, number eight, uh, insurance reimbursement, basically, uh, we got paid back for, for doing a great job, uh, in dealing with a hazmat situation on the highway, and you see number 11, Kane Brown video shoot, that's them paying us back for the time our staff took. So these aren't necessarily, it's mon, it's money that in and out both, to, to, so that Loretta can balance the budget. But if there's any of those that you have questions on, please, please let us know. And also up here on number two, we have the flipper truck for sanitation and a sweeper, and we're bringing those to you in January to get your input on that, but because we anticipate possibly spending that money, Loretta has that in the, the bond right now.
Uh, for the next month, if we do that, please break those out.
Oh, yeah, that's no problem. We have it broken out, it's just not on this.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, it's on my attachments I have there, but okay. No problem.
Any questions?
And this is first reading, so there may be changes between now and second reading.
There will, I bet there will be.
Next month will be a public hearing.
That's right. Any questions? Being none, I entertain a motion. We, we accept, uh, 2020-1060 as the first reading. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Please.
You got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance 2020-1061, this is also a first reading, an ordinance amending water and sewer rates and charges for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, as set forth in Schedule A, Section 18-125 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
And Mayor and commissioners, the copy that you received, e, e, either via email or a hard copy, the changes are in red ink, and there's very few. There is a change, uh, to the outside city limit rate, there is change to tax on the outside of city limits, and then we've redone the way we are, want to charge deposits, and then we kind of went over that at the study session, but we're happy to, um, answer any questions you have. Cory, if I missed anything, just chime in.
I think it needs to be noted, we talked about this quite a bit in the work session, which is where we try to do a lot of this, there are not going to be any changes to the residential service, or the cost for inside-city Mount Pleasant residents, so you just want to make that clear. Uh, we have a responsibility under the municipal code to balance the budget and operate our, uh, utilities at or above profitability numbers, so, uh, we did a project that I think if we all look back at now, back out in Mount Joy, and all the way out to the Lewis County line, that we probably would have a second thought on that, it's costing a fortune.
And we're gonna do a, a formal rate study on that going forward, too, just in now.
We've got, uh, him tasked doing a, a rate study for us right now, but in the interim, we've got to do something to get that balanced, we just don't have any choice.
So this rate could go up a little bit more.
I would absolutely anticipate it going up, yes, for outside city rates.
But I just want to make sure everybody understands it's not going to affect the city rest.
Lord.
It's just out of city limits.
The only thing we could take the inside would be the deposit.
Yeah, we're...
Which is firstly a deposit.
Yeah, we're trying, we're not doing the background checks and the, I'm sorry, we're not doing the credit checks that, that have been a problem, and, um, I think that it'll be a, a, like, Loretta said, a deposit change.
I just want to make sure all that's on the table.
Yes, it's a separate ordinance, and it's in the code separately, and it's very generic, just allowing us to charge a deposit.
Okay.
If I do, I just think it's important that everybody understand that that is just for outer cities.
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Being none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2020-1060 as described in the ordinance.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. You got a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, ordinance 2020-1062, again, this is a next reading, an ordinance to establish rules and regulations for the parks and greenways of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Uh, Mayor and commissioners, this is kind of long overdue, we've got some great parks, but we don't have signs posted that, that tell people what the rules are, and we want to do that, and so this is a pretty simple ordinance, kind of followed what some of the other cities are doing, uh, listing what the rules and regulations are, and once it's approved by the city commission, we'll have signs made up, and they'll be consistent throughout all the parks. And any questions or, uh, additions, we're happy, again, this is an ordinance, it's first reading, it could change, we can change it on second reading if we choose to.
I think we went over this pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this Thursday as well, and, uh...
And the signs are great.
Signs are great.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna start getting use of Gordinga Park for everybody's info, and at, at a higher level, we're moving the disc golf out there. Uh, it'd be a great place for it, it's not the swamp, is it, but?
No, sir.
They're bringing in a, uh, professional disc golf designer.
We have worked with a professional disc golf designer, yes, sir.
And we will actually have that in front of you in January, so that there is a record that the commission approved moving, moving the disc golf to Gordinga.
Got a nice park up there we're gonna, we need to utilize, and you got great facilities.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept ordinance 2020-62 as a first reading.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. D, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six, a resolution approving the state of Tennessee deferred compensation plan, resolution of participating employer agreement and the Tennessee State Employees Deferred Compensation Plan and Trust, four fifty-seven, the resolution of participating employer agreement for the city of Mount Pleasant and the city manager in authorizing the mayor and the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to execute the same.
Mayor and city commissioners, just to clarify any confusion, it's easy just to talk about the city employees four oh one and four fifty-seven. The only difference with the city manager is the city manager, whoever that person is, vests immediately because the city manager is kind of a gypsy trade and they come and go. So they vest immediately and have the ability to, to have, uh, retirement. All the other employees has a five-year vesting period that, that we have. So that's the only difference between the different documents. But to, to clarify real quickly, because it is, it is confusing, is we switched from International City Managers Association. That was our four oh one, four fifty-seven program. And the state program offers a lot less in fees and it offers the employees to make more with their investments. So to us, that was a win-win. We went with that eighteen months ago and we've been with that since. What we didn't know is the state's definition of compensation was different than ICMA's different definition of compensation. And we said we want the exact same program. And their definition of compensation includes overtime, includes vehicle, uh, a vehicle allowance, everything. And our idea was to only include base pay because not every employee has the ability to earn overtime. And so we wanted to give the, the match that the city provides for everybody based on the base pay. So we had to go back and redefine compensation to exclude overtime, anything above base pay. We've also, uh, removed a probationary period, so now as soon as you're hired, you're eligible to be contributing and you're also mandated to contribute the two percent. Those are the first two changes. And the third change is the employee now chooses whether their investment goes into the four oh one or four fifty-seven. Before, we used to kind of say, this, this part has to go here and this part has to go here. So it would provide them with some more clarification. Um, we, we may have missed that eighteen months ago in, in the heavy document that was attached. And I do have the document, if anyone wants, anybody wants to see it, this, this is exactly what's attached to the resolution that you have. Um, but we thought that we had told the state exactly what we wanted. That's not what we got. This is changing it to, to where we want to be. And honestly, we've had probably, what, four different staff people? Once we, once, once we got this program and it was approved, every time we tried to contact somebody from the state, that person was gone and we had a new person, and it's been a difficult eighteen months. I believe that this is going to get our problems resolved. Part of that seventeen thousand dollars in your budget amendment that you've already voted on first reading is because we have to go back and match the overtime and the other things that we have not been in the past doing. We plan to end that once this resolution is accepted come January first. We'll just be doing base pay again as far as the city matches. And that's a lot I just said, so if there's any questions you have, Loretta and I will be happy to try and answer them. Getting us back to where we were with a better plan, if that makes sense.
The employees aren't going to be donating any less. They're just going to be getting the benefit of it being under the state.
Bigger plan.
Which pays more.
This also allows the employees that are under the old retirement, we call the Voya Plan that's frozen, uh, that, that basically that's what they have, they can now, on their own, the city doesn't match it because the cities are paying for the old plan, but they can also, uh, add to a four oh one K or a four fifty-seven and have that in addition to the old plan.
We want to make sure we got everything above board because it's just seventeen thousand dollar swing. And I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable and understands why we're doing it.
I think Loretta's about ready to lose her mind over it, but...
So how many put the old plan?
Pardon?
How, how did we, the new plan still, everybody not go to the old plan?
No, the old plan is the people that have been here for like twenty years plus, and they are frozen in that plan. No one can be added to it.
Okay.
And they can't opt out of it, um...
The reason being is that plan was a defined contrib-, oh, uh, defined benefit plan.
That's right.
Versus defined, actually, this is more a hybrid plan, um, and so therefore it would not benefit those employees to opt out.
And that plan is completely papered by the city, which is why they ruled out of it because it's a, you can't afford it, it's not sustainable long term.
Not for the city.
So now, now the plan is that the city does match, the city will match up to eight percent if you choose that you want to put eight percent in. Um, but it's just for people that, and I, I don't remember the cutoff year from that year on. But the, the old plan, if you stay with the city and reach your retirement age, is very beneficial to those employees.
Hey, you're in two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven, so they're not, they were frozen, and now there's a new plan, but the old plan people can still invest in this new plan.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good discussion. We need to make sure we understand it.
It's very complicated.
It's very complicated.
And so I just wonder, the employees, are they on board with this?
It really doesn't impact employees, um, because we wanted the same plan that we had. The language in the contract wasn't the same. Actually, this will give employees a little bit more of an opportunity to invest because on the employee side, not the city side, what the city matches, on the employee side, they can choose, they can, uh, put a percentage with all of their overtime and everything else with their match.
Gotcha.
So they have the ability to put more into it, up to the IRS guidelines. The problem's going to be, and I'm glad you brought it up, is just sharing this with employees for them to understand it. It, it is confusing to say that, okay, this is what you're, you have to give this and it's going to, you can put it where you want to, but you can add this to it and you, it's, we're going to have to sit down with employees and go over it for sure.
Okay.
Does the state offer, uh, somebody to come down and sit down with them and explain that?
Yes.
I believe I would request that they come down and do that.
They may not, they may not know that when we changed it.
Yes, oh, yeah. But it's not with every employee, but now, but now the, it's, it's further complicated, so they probably need more.
That's why I'm recommending, this thing's getting, going to get complicated and we do not want an employee not understanding what's happening.
No.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I, I do think that when we voted on this, that somebody came and talked.
No, with every employee, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
So I, I would request that they come...
We're working on that.
Yeah, we're working on that. We don't want to be more confusing than we already have, yeah.
You could probably do that in one group meeting without it having to be individually is my point, because it's going to affect everyone the same.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't see them having to do it individually.
It, there should be no negative impact to employees at all. The, the impact is the seventeen thousand dollars the city's having to cover that we didn't anticipate. It's not what's...
Well, you don't think they have an impact, but if they in their mind think they have an impact, that have an impact.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's why I wanted to ask, because I didn't...
No, I agree.
Perception becomes re- reality without education.
There's no doubt, you're correct.
Yeah.
We will take care of that on our end.
All right, any other discussion? Doesn't appear to be, now entertain a motion.
I believe that we accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a couple of seconds?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. E, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-seven, a resolution of support and commitment for funds for a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation grant program.
Mayor and commissioners, uh, you know that, uh, TMA staff have come in and talked with us, talked with homeowners that have experienced flooding. What this resolution is doing is allowing us as staff to apply for the program. It's, it, and it's telling you what the overall cost could be based on the twelve people that have shared an interest. Um, don't know that the twelve homes would be accepted by the state. None of that is going to be known until they do a lot of research with looking at the flooding and the receipts and pictures that they, they get. But this is what we have, we've filed the forms and filled them out exactly the way TMA asked us to do it. So the way it, right now, if it, if it went exactly as the, the people, and I have all the, the twelve people that have shared an interest and the, the, the cost of their appraisals, fair market value, et cetera, would be a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars from the city. Some of that we've already met with our administrative costs because it can be in time. And then, and it would be a total of one point five million, four, one point five hundred forty-four thousand fifty-two for the state. Remember, we have to cover, um, twelve and a half percent. But like I said, part of, and that is the one ninety-three, part of that we've already, um, met with, uh, administrative in time services. So we're just applying, and if you all were here at that meeting, what they kept saying is it's a great program, but it doesn't move quickly. So it's a very long process.
So whatever they, I guess the state decides, are we obligated when we pass this tonight? I mean, it, there's twelve individuals or whatever, say the, the state comes back and says, hey, we're going to do six of these. So we, as a city, we're, we're going to be obligated, right?
You're agreeing to that twelve and a half percent, yes.
Okay.
By applying, you're agreeing to that, yes.
But only to the ones that...
Whether it's one or whether it's five.
Right, that's what I'm, right.
Only to the ones that accept it though, right?
That is true.
And that, the state's very much involved in that decision.
And they have to qualify because they're not qualified.
But I mean, e- even at that, I mean, the residents that, that's involved, they might decide, no, I don't want that also.
Because of what they may offer.
She, she has said they can back out the day of closing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yes, you are committing to twelve and a half percent by, with this resolution.
Is the number right in their packet?
Pardon?
Is the number right in their packet?
Yes.
The hundred and fifty-something thousands, yeah, that would be our liability to this with it.
One ninety-three.
One ninety-three, I'm sorry.
Is there something that you're looking at that's different, Corey?
Yeah, my original draft that I printed off didn't have the right numbers on it.
Okay, and it's, it's with the breakdown of house by house, so I think that what they have in front of them is correct.
Even on the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, yes, local share of that, or one ninety-three, seven, seven, six.
Exactly, same, yeah.
Yep, it's all there.
It's correct, correct. Thanks, though.
Well, we got a lot of eyes. Any other questions?
So with the thing in time, um, kind of explain that a little bit, like what, what goes into that purchase for the hundred ninety-three thousand, six dollars and fifty-six?
Okay, so we're tracking every hour of every employee that's worked on this. So we're like, uh, Rodney Howell and others that have put together all of these applications for the, the people that have an interest, all of their time is going to count towards that. If, if the house is accepted and we decide that we could use that house as a fire training scene and burn it down, then that, that we would get credit for that type of an expense. Anything that we're doing as a city to assist in this process would be considered in time. And apparently, it's fairly common that cities don't have to come up with, with a lot of cash because there is so much work that's done behind the scenes to get there.
But I think in the end, we're going to be surprised, there'll be a lot of them that's back on us.
Thank you, right, right.
But we try.
And we've done, and you know what, we started.
This is one of several efforts that we're trying to reduce the flooding issues.
Got to start somewhere. Any other discussion? Being none, entertain a motion.
Um, I'm made for resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-seven.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a number of seconds? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-eight, state acquisition of Martin Methodist College, establishing a fourth undergraduate campus of the University of Tennessee system. And I'll just speak briefly on this, I was at a luncheon last week where they asked, uh, um, Randy Boyd, which was the gentleman that donated for our dog park, is now the president of the University of Tennessee system, and they couldn't have picked a better one. Um, University of Tennessee is acquiring Martin Methodist. And, uh, a number of the steps, the first two major steps were achieved last week with both boards of the Martin Methodist School and the University of Tennessee system voting unanimously to purchase Martin Methodist. Uh, so what you're going to have now is, is a University of Tennessee school in Pulaski, right here in our back door, to get students that can now get four-year degrees.
Affordable.
At a much more affordable rate than what Martin Methodist currently charges. And, uh, it, it, what they did, they asked each community, if they would, to pass a resolution just in support of it because the next step of this is the Tennessee General Assembly has to approve this. And they just felt like if they had the resolution from each of the communities supporting it, that then that would be, uh, be a big help. So that's what this is about.
I'll make that we accept resolution twenty dash twenty, twenty twenty dash thirty-nine.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Got a couple of seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. G, resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine, a resolution from Murray County, Tennessee, in cooperation with the city of Mount Pleasant to submit an application to the state of Tennessee Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mayor and commissioners, as I said in our sewer report earlier, we're closing out the, the grant project for the two thousand eighteen CDVD that was awarded to us, Verita County. We've been to several public hearings at the county and no one else has expressed an interest to apply for that grant, which is due in February. And, um, this resolution is authorizing us to apply for a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. And our match would be eighty-seven thousand. And then if, this is approved by the commission here, I go to the county commission in February, and the county commission has to approve a resolution as well, authorizing us to apply for their funds.
Again, if you'll notice, uh, on that BARD report, some of the work it had been done came from the previous community development grant we got to the county.
And, and this one is going to be a little bit more geared toward water resources because we're, we're pretty much maxed out on sewer right now. So that's kind of what we're looking at is, um, we're great with our water, but you always have to have Plan B and more water if you have droughts and things like that. So, and especially if you get an industry that, that needs more water than we're used to. So we have a backup plan always, you're never going to notice if we have problems with water because we can buy from Columbia in a second. But we want to have our own water too, so it's important for us to have those resources available.
Any questions, comments? Being none, entertain a motion.
Motion to, to approve res- resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor? Aye.
See, we want money.
Yeah, really, really, thirty-nine.
And maybe, maybe go to aye, it's the last thing that's...
Right. Write offs, again, I want to encourage everybody, if they're going to pass that out, that you keep this...
We've had them out of the...
I, I know that there have been, Corey, thank you for keeping everybody updated on that. I noticed the last list we got on property tax stuff, there were a number of names over there, so...
And we've gotten a lot of calls and pop-ins at my office.
On property tax, yeah.
On property taxes, yeah.
That's good, and these write offs are included, the utilities, so...
Utilities, yeah.
Any questions?
We need a motion to...
To approve, I'm just making sure we don't have any other questions or comments on it. Being none, entertain a motion. Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
As I stated, that doesn't mean we don't try to collect, so...
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, so it's not a deadline to like, you're doing something, you're paying them.
It takes them off our books, but we still attempt to collect them as long as we can.
And if they try to come back in, uh, establish new service, they have to pay this off before we'll allow new service.
Yeah, one of my, we don't have new service, but, but I'm trying to come pay that off.
Yeah, and a lot of times like Loretta said, study session, we'll come in with different names, somebody else in the family.
I don't know how they do it, but I'm in, yeah.
It happens, for sure.
Hey, they, they're very creative. They're telling you, they get your studio.
All right. We don't have any comments from citizens. Vice Mayor Granberry? You're decided?
Here. Everybody be safe up there with, uh, COVID, uh, numbers are rising and, uh...
Tennessee top of the list.
Tennessee top of the list.
Still have school the rest of the week?
Not at the right top of the list.
Um, I've, I've just got the notification, so, um, since this is being broadcast, I'm not allowed to say, but our numbers are at...
Not live, but...
Nine fifty-two.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then once they go nine sixty-five, we go remote, so...
Okay.
We'll be close, uh, be ready.
Ms. Willie, got anything?
No, I don't have any to give you.
Uh, thanks, Ms. Willie, we went over Saturday morning and worked the Santa Trolley and that's more fun than the work. I promise you, I mean, it was, it's rewarding to see what that group does, and they are to be thanked. So if you run into any of those folks, they really do a good job of all of it. Mike, got anything?
Wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Better twenty twenty now.
Let's get three twenty twenty, please. Get this thing behind us.
Y'all want to bring me any gifts, I'm okay with that. My birthday is this month.